Well, good evening, everyone. Wow. I didn't have a class to quiet down there. Phenomenal. Well, welcome to our city council meeting of November 6, 2019. And at this time, before we start the council meeting, I'd like to have Jordan Harris come forward from Cornerstone Church, Pastor Jordan Harris, for the invocation.
All right, well, everybody bow their heads with me. Holy and gracious Father, in your word you tell us to consider it all joy when we encounter various trials, knowing that testing of our faith produces endurance and that endurance will perfect the result, that we may be perfect and complete lacking in nothing. But if we do lack wisdom, then we are to simply ask you, who gives to all generously and without reproach, and it will be given to us if we ask. So, Lord, we come here to simply offer this asking, to say that, Lord, if there's any wisdom that we are lacking, that you may give it to everyone who is here this evening. That, Lord, that we may see the things that you desire for us to see, to move the direction that you desire for us to move as a community, that we may be glorifying to you. Father, this is a time when, in the calendar year, when all of us come together to share in what we are thankful for. And so, I ask that you give us the wisdom to be able to know that it is you who give us all things. And we should be thankful and express that thankfulness to you this month and in this time. May you bless each and every person who is here, Lord, and give them the strength to serve you in the office and the capacity that you have granted them in today. We pray this all in your holy and merciful name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Harris. I'd like to call to order the November 6, 2019 city council meeting. And would you please stand? And Chief Breezy, would you lead us in the flag, so that...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Director Maloney.
Maria. Johnson Santos. Jones. Lewis. Valalta.
Here, we do have a quorum. Consideration of approval agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Santos.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Mr. Jones.
A second, please.
Motioned by Santos, seconded by Jones, to approve the agenda stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay. Let's go on to item number five, presentations. And at this time, I would like to have the fire department come forward. All the firefighters that are present. So, gentlemen, if it's okay, I'm going to read this proclamation. And then, I don't want to take anyway any thunder from what you've done over the years. And I'd like one of you to please explain what you've done for cancer awareness in this community. Proclamation recognizing cancer awareness. Whereas, according to the American Cancer Society in 2019, there will be an estimated 1,762,450 new cancer cases diagnosed and 606,880 cancer deaths in the United States. These statistics make cancer the second most common cause of death in the nation, accounting for nearly one out of every four deaths in America. Cancer awareness emphasizes the importance of prevention and early detection through health screening, as well as the promotion of healthy lifestyles, including proper diet, exercise, and a smoke-free environment. And let's include vaping now, too. Cancer awareness honors the memory of those who have lost, supports those who are still fighting cancer, and celebrates the survivors who inspire us through their strength and courage. The city of Los Vanos recognizes cancer awareness as an opportunity to join together to battle the cancers and to send a message that sending all cancers and ending all cancers must be a national health priority. Due to Kagomi's generous donations towards the Los Vanos Firefired Association Cancer Awareness, the T-shirt fundraiser, and I'm going to have them tell you the amount, will be dispersed to individuals in our community who are battling cancer. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Los Vanos do hereby encourage the community to become active in cancer awareness and to show support to those who have lost loved ones to cancer and to those who have defeated or are currently battling this disease. And, gentlemen, thank you so much. And could one of you please explain to the audience why you're here this evening and for the shirts that everyone's wearing?
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to repeat all of what he just said. On behalf of Los Vanos Fire Department, I'd like to thank everybody who helped us. This is the sixth year in a row that we've done this, along with Pink Hills. This year, we did things a little different. We had Kagomi, which is a local company, endorse us with the funding for the shirts. That'll, in return, give the community and the person that gets that money a lot more benefit out of it. Also, we did a little different. We allowed the public to come up with the design of the shirt this year. Somebody wants to turn around and show it? As well, as everybody knows, October is Cancer Awareness Month. It's very important for everybody. We all know somebody or have had it ourselves, have to go through cancer or treatment and all that. So, let's all keep working together as a community. And with us, the department will provide the support every year so that we can accomplish this goal. This year, we accumulated $6,860, which will go to recipient. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please introduce yourselves?
Lupercastillo.
Robert Strout.
Juan Ramirez.
Mark Frantello.
Josh Howry-Kamer.
Roger Hughes.
Mason Hurley.
Thank you all so much for what you've done and the money that you raise consistently every year to defeat cancer. And I'm just at a loss over words. Thank you so much. Okay. Let's go on to... Can you hear me? Yeah. All right. Recognition of entry awards from the VFW Post 2487 and American Legion Post 166 Veterans Day Parade. Veterans, could you please come forward? Mayor and council... Mayor and council members? Mayor and council members, we'd like to start out, the VFW and the American Legion would like to start out by thanking the city of Los Vanos and the community of Los Vanos for the tremendous support you've given us for the veterans parade. We started the veterans parade six years ago. This year was the best, and I've had nothing but positive comments, not only from people in the community, but people out of the community that saw the pictures that we posted on social media. The schools have done an outstanding job. They're competing with each other for the best patriotic entry to win one of these beautiful flags. And this year, the judges were ready to pull their hair out trying to pick the winners because they were all so close. Everybody did a great job. We had so many young people at that veterans parade and so many families watching it. So, I think it was the best event I've seen in Los Vanos in a long time. We couldn't do it without the support of the community and the support of the city. Chief Breezy, thank you very much for the work the police department did in the city. You guys were excellent. And we had absolutely no glitches this year, so it was really great.
Remember that, chief.
Patricia's going to announce the winners, and then we're going to present them with their flags.
So, the first one that we're going to call up is the winner of the elementary level. So, that was Westside Union Elementary School, if you want to come on up. Come on up. Want to try and get a picture, you guys? So, who was the one that kind of spearheaded this entry?
I'd like to say I could take credit for this, but I can't. Mrs. Ordunis, our assistant principal, she organized the event.
Well, I, you know, I was there organizing all of the students and the parents, but the credit goes to the parents that built the float. They did a fantastic job, their time and their dedication, the various hours that they put in to honor our veterans. And thank you, American Legion and VFW, for putting on an amazing parade. These parents are our parent club and also part of our English Learners Advisory Committee, which we call ELAC. Give him my hand.
So, I did want to mention one thing. I'm a mom of a Marine, and that was the theme this year, was salute to the Marines. I had an opportunity to share our parade with a Moms or a Marine Parent Group on Facebook, and I shared the entries of the winners. And I can tell you that over 400 people just raved. Parents of Marines loved your guys' entry, the entries of the other winners. Some of them said it just moved them to tears. So, I just wanted to share that with the community.
Do you guys have the certificate?
Yeah.
So, you guys have your flag that you get for a year. So, you can start thinking about next year. Next year is salute to the Navy. But this award you get to, or certificate you get to keep. So, hopefully, you can display it.
Yeah, we will. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, we get the big flag, too?
Yeah. You get the tape on it and hang it up. Saggy.
There you go.
Just four more. Michael, come and steal it again, a year from now.
Okay, yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
So, the winner for the junior high level was the Los Vanos Junior High. So, come on down. Again, I just want to say that your guys' entry was so creative and so many parts to it. You could see the hard work that was put into creating that. Who's the one that kind of spearheaded the...
Madam Karen.
Okay.
So, I just want to say congratulations to you guys and try to take a picture. And I have you. This way, sweetie. Just a little bit so you can get the flag. There you go. And their certificate. And did anybody from up here want to say anything? I just want to give you an opportunity. Go ahead.
Just again, thank you to the veterans for putting on this event in our community, but also for inviting the schools to be a part of it because we do take great pride in being a part of it every year. And we appreciate all that you've done for our community, but also for your service. And this is an easy way for us to show you our gratitude. So, thank you.
Okay. So, you get to take your flag home with you? You guys get to take it. Well, we'll be back next year. And last but not least is for the high school level. Pacheco Girls Golf, or Pacheco High School, was won by the girls golf team that's in there. So, come on up. I feel like I have an audience full of my students here. Anyway, I would just like to say, repeating the same thing that's been going on, is thank you, veterans, for all that you do for our community. We know our stadium is named Veteran Stadium. And anytime that with golf and with track, we have called upon you guys to come and help us out, you've never let us down. So, and that goes for the whole community as well. So, I'd like to thank you for your time and your service, and thank you for putting on the parade.
We want to thank everyone and thank the council for letting us present these things here. And we'll see you all next year. The theme is going to be Navy. So, start thinking of how you want to do it. But we're hoping that next year will be even bigger than this year. Patricia McCoy is an Air Force veteran. She's with the American Legion, and she's our parade chairman, and she does an excellent job with the parade. Next is Rick Descano, who is the, let me see, you're the adjutant for the American Legion and also the adjutant for the VFW, and he does a great job. He's one of the few in the valley that plays the bugle at all the funeral services that we do out at the National Cemetery, and we do about 120 of them a year. We have a live bugler. Everybody else brings a recording. We have Ray McCully. Ray McCully is one of the rarer types. He's both a Navy veteran and an Air Force veteran. He couldn't make up his mind. I think what happened is when he was in the Navy, he got seasick, so he joined the Air Force. We have Ildo Martins, who's an Army veteran. Ildo is our go-to guy. He does anything we ask him and always there to support the community and the veterans. Jim Ballantyne, I'm the commander of the VFW. Jim's my right-hand man. He tells me what I can do and what I can't do, just like having a mom. And next, we have Tom Higby, who was a Navy veteran, and Tom has helped us out for the last few years. He's been a member of both of our posts. And I'm Mike Hughes. I was the commander of the VFW.
Now, we're gonna go on to public forum. Members of the public, maybe it may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detail guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your city and, oh, your name and city of residence. I'm sorry. I was looking at something else. And if you have a cell phone, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. But before we start the public forum, Chief Breezy, would you come forward, please? Mrs. Wilber, would you come up?
I'm going to have Chief Breezy talk about this special lady who has been a part of our community for decades and the good work that she's done for animals.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Good evening, everyone. It's fabulous to see such a great crowd here tonight, especially because we get an opportunity to say thank you to a resident of Los Banos that has been here for decades. She's going away. She is retiring to another state to be with family. She's a very humble young lady, so Pacheco, do me a huge favor, and let's give Kathy Wilber a humongous round of applause for being a great person. So Kathy's been a member of our Los Banos Volunteers for Animal group for 15 years, probably longer than some of you have been alive on this planet. She has helped the police department and this community bring animals back to their owners, foster them out, adopt them out, return them to a loving home thousands upon thousands upon thousands of times over that 15-year period. She has been the backbone for our animal shelter for all of that time. She has been president time and time again of our group. When we are lacking a strong presence at our shelter because we're short on volunteers, because volunteers are busy, they live normal lives just like you and I. They have jobs. They have commitments that they have to attend to. But somehow, for the last 15 years, Kathy has found a way to come out to the shelter, to go to Petco, to go to adoption fairs, to walk in the parade, and to do all of the things that we need, that this community needs, to make our shelter function and get animals back out to a loving and caring family, like I said, time and time again. So in recognition of her efforts for the last 15 years, we want her to leave. We're gonna have something else for her that we're gonna have to get to on another date. Maybe we'll send it by mail, or I will personally deliver it to Oregon, correct? Yes. Yes, because I could always use the road trip out of state. So we would like to give you this, Kathy, certificate of recognition for over 15 years of dedicated volunteer service to the Los Banos Police Department's Volunteers for Animals program. As the backbone and president of the program, you will be missed, but you are congratulated on a well-earned retirement. Ladies and gentlemen, can I present to you, and please, one more time, a very loud round of applause for Kathy Wilber? Pacheco, I really appreciate that, guys. Thank you, guys, very much. Kathy, would you like to say anything?
I would like to thank the community for their support. Without your help and your donations, we would not be able to save all the animals that we have. And I want you to know, even though the volunteers are not in large force right now, there are a few dedicated people at the shelter that are still saving animals on a daily basis. And we still have our voucher program open for spaying and neutering of cats and dogs. So if you need that, our program will probably end in December. Just call the shelter between nine and five and go get your voucher. Thank you for your recognition.
Kathy?
I have known this young lady for 55 years. She, when they first came to Los Banos, her husband, her late husband, was my high school history teacher, Alan Wilber, and was a high school teacher and counselor for many, many years at Los Banos High School before Pacheco. We didn't even know what Pacheco was. We didn't have a Pacheco. And I have to tell you, Kathy, just personally and professionally, I can't thank you enough for what you've done for our city, the hours, the countless hours, and the jobs that you have done that probably 95% of the general public wouldn't do to take care of our animals. And so with that, you have my heartfelt gratitude and thank you for what you've done, being a dog lover, and she's helped us find some of our pets. And I have to tell you that you are going to be missed so much for what you've done for this community, and thank you so much. Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the public forum? I know this gray-haired guy.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Jeff Dela Cruz, and I am resident of Los Banos, but I'm also a government teacher at Pacheco High School. Here we are once again, coming, bringing my class to you guys. They're not as big as before because we're gonna try to chunk it this year. And first is bringing in 200 students all at one time. So we'll be back in two weeks when you guys have your next meeting again, and then I'll follow in and follow in after that, and then next semester, same thing, when I get a new, whole new group of students, because I only get these guys for one semester, and then we switch, and I get a whole new batch, and we start all over again. But once again, the idea here is to bring these guys here to see how our local government works and possibly speak to you guys. The goal is, if I can get somebody up here and talk to you guys as well, that's great. And I actually do have a student who's actually gonna be coming up here, and so she's gonna be talking to you guys tonight. So I know it takes a lot of courage for her to come on up here. I still get nervous when I come up here and talk up here, but it's just one of the things where we get to see how local government works. And hopefully, the idea is that as we get closer and closer to the election of 2020, these guys will start to get more involved in the election process and continue to stay involved, because as we know, I keep telling these guys is that as the young people, they're one of the lowest demographic of voters, and that needs to change. And so getting these guys out there, getting them involved, and helping them understand how government works to make them positive citizens in the future, whether it be here, whether it be another state, another city, but at least they're gonna appreciate what government's all about, understand it, and then maybe possibly continue to contribute as they grow up and be adults. So thank you very much for your time, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. Let me, if any of the students are coming up to speak, we're not gonna be rude, but we can't answer questions during a public forum. Part of government regulations, if it's not on the agenda, then we cannot answer a question or have our staff answer unless it's agendized. But if you invite us to your classroom, we can talk all we want. So if you'd like to do that, we'll come and visit you, and all of us are available at certain times of the day. If you let everyone know ahead of time, we can come to your classroom, and you can talk to us one-on-one or two on the rest of the class, whatever works for you. But during this meeting, you can come up and you can make a statement, you can talk, but we're not able to answer any questions during this time, and I apologize for that. That's just open meeting laws. Okay? All right. So with that, if anyone would like to come up and would like to speak, we'd love to have you come up.
Really short. Good evening, council. I apologize for my nervousness. I am really nervous. But my name is Deisha Morales. I currently am a student attending Pacheco High School in the 12th grade. I live here in town with my single father and my four-year-old sister and have been a resident for 10 years. I live in an area known as Ranchwood. My main concern today is dealing with our roads not having enough stop signs. I believe there is not enough stop signs, and there needs to be more added in that specific area. This area is known as Ranchwood and Santa Barbara Road. On these roads, we see a lot of kids either going to school or making their way to Dollar General. On the roads Santa Barbara and Ranchwood, there is a dip that makes it hard for drivers who cannot see cars coming, and so if there was a stop sign added, it would allow us to feel secure and safe, knowing drivers are supposed to stop due to the stop sign. I also noticed you guys added stop signs near Ranchwood Park, and I feel that was a really great idea for pedestrians and drivers. And I also feel if you guys add these stop signs on Santa Barbara and Ranchwood, it would also be something good, and I hope you guys take this idea into consideration, and thank you.
I can answer that. No, I can just tell them there's a traffic safety committee, and you can petition to the traffic safety committee. The chief can help you with that, okay? So you can talk to him. I'll defer to the chief, and we have a traffic safety committee that you can work through. And that's how we talk about stop signs.
Okay, thank you.
All right. That's an informational item. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Yes, sir. Remember, you only have five minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Gene Leib. I am on the board of directors for the Chamber of Commerce, and I am here tonight to talk about the Christmas parade. So today is November 6th, Christmas Parade, 7th? 6th. Christmas Parade is December 6th, starts at 6 o'clock. It is the downtown, the annual downtown Christmas parade. It is sponsored this year by Republic Services and Coldwell Banker, Couch and Associates. Without the sponsors, we would not be able to put on a parade. Last year, we had 60 entries. I'm hoping we have more than 60 this year. We will give out 10 awards at the Henry Muto Plaza following the parade. There will be singing by the Los Banos Choir, Los Banos High School Choir. Santa will be there to light the official Christmas tree downtown, and our chamber president, John Kates, will be there to emcee the awards that are beginning out that evening. So just want to make sure that everyone knows, right here, I'm holding an application to enter the parade. These are available at the chamber office at 932 Sixth Street. They're also available at the Los Banos Enterprise Office at 907 Sixth Street. So if you want to enter the parade, it's free, and it's a great opportunity to show off your business or your school or your nonprofit organization, and I hope to see you all out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Very enlightening. It's slow. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public forum? Now seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum and bring you back to council level, and we will go on to Item 7, Consideration of Approval of Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have Director Maloney.
Okay, bear with me. This is quite a long consent agenda. So the items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrants numbers 218328 through 218868 in the amount of $2,634,773.16. First quarter investment report for fiscal year 2019 to 2020. Minutes for the September 18th, 2019 city council meeting. Minutes for the October 2nd, 2019 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6140, amending the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget and approving the increase of expenditures in the amount of $45,331.33 and revenues in the amount of $43,331.33 related to the replacement of a totaled police vehicle to be reimbursed by a McLarens insurance firm and the Central San Joaquin Valley Risk Management Authority. City Council Resolution Number 6141, authorizing the city manager to enter into Measure V Regional Project Funding Agreement for the Pacheco Boulevard SR152 Regional Path Project between the City of Los Banos and Merced County Association of Governments. City Council Resolution Number 6142, authorizing the city manager to enter into Measure V Regional Project Funding Agreement for the Pioneer Road Widening Project between the City of Los Banos and Merced County Association of Governments. City Council Resolution Number 6143, accepting public improvements for Shaughnessy Village Phases 1, 2, and 3, generally located within the area bounded by APN 083-130-042 to the north, Highway 165 Mercy Springs Road, and APNs 083100009, APN 083100008, and 083100007 to the west. Scripts Drive to the south and College Green subdivision to the east, more specifically identified as APNs 083-100-005 and 083-100-006, and the developer is Stonewood Homes, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6144- City Council Resolution Number 6144, approving and adopting final tract map number 2001-02, Mission Village South Phase 3C, an accompanying subdivision improvement agreement, generally located within the area bounded by Mission Village South Phase 3B to the north, Las Palmas Road to the east, Womart Road to the south, and APN 428-28002 to the west, more specifically identified as APN 428-280010. The applicant is Stonefield Home, Inc., a California corporation. City Council Resolution Number 6145, approving and adopting final tract map number 2016-02, East Phase, East Center Phase 2A, an accompanying subdivision improvement agreement, generally located within the area bounded by Center Avenue to the west, Future East Center Phase 3 to the south, East Center Phase 1 subdivision to the east, more specifically identified as APN 431-270-005, and the developer is Pioneer Development Company, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6146, approving and adopting final tract map number 2017-01, Stone Creek at Los Banas, the Villages Phase 7 Phase 1B Unit 1, an accompanying subdivision improvement agreement, generally located within the area bounded by Villages 7 Phase 1 Unit 1 to the north, Future Villages 7 Phase 1B Unit 2 to the south and east, and Merced County APN 430060002 to the west, more specifically identified as Lot D, APN 430060032, and the applicant is Anderson Homes, a California corporation. City Council Resolution Number 6147, awarding the bid to the purchase of one new 2019-2020 model cab and chassis, authorizes the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to issue the purchase order to Fresno Truck Center in the amount of $108,884.21. City Council Resolution Number 6148, awarding the bid for the purchase of one new 2019-2020 model cab and chassis with 240 hook lift system, authorizes the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to issue the purchase order to Fresno Truck Center in the amount of $141,834.37. City Council Resolution Number 6149, awarding the bid for the purchase of one new 2019-2020 model medium duty utility truck with lift gate number A, authorizes the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to issue the purchase order to Santas Ford in the amount of $47,995. City Council Resolution Number 6150, awarding the bid for the purchase of one new 2019-2020 model medium duty utility truck with lift gate number B, authorizes the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to issue the purchase order to Santas Ford in the amount of $47,995. City Council Resolution Number 6151, awarding the bid for the purchase of one new 2019-2020 model medium duty utility truck with lift gate number C, authorizes the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to issue the purchase order to Santas Ford in the amount of $47,000... Is that right? City Council Resolution Number 6152, awarding the bid for the purchase of one new 2019-2020 crack seal machine, authorizes the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to issue the purchase order to Dispensing Technology Corporation in the amount of $93,481.24. City Council Resolution Number 6153, authorizing a word of construction contract to Precision Grade, Inc., in the amount of $52,439, with a 10% contingency in the amount of $5,243 for the Seventh Street Ballpark restroom. City Council Resolution Number 6154, authorizing a word of construction contract to TBS Contractors in the amount of $198,630, with a 10% contingency in the amount of $19,863 for the congestion mitigation and air quality, construction infill sidewalk improvements, federal aid project number CML 5160027 at various locations in the City of Los Banas. City Council Resolution Number 6155, amending the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget and approving the increase in expenditures of Measure H funding in the amount of $40,000 related to the purchase and upfitting of a new code enforcement vehicle, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay. Is there any city council member that would, uh, like to remove an item for discussion? Mr. Jones, did you have something on? Was that just on? Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to, uh, request to remove item Q.
Q. All right. All right. Mrs. Lewis, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted minus item Q.
Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Motion by Lewis, second by Jones, to approve the consent agenda as stated, minus item Q for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis, press again, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, no question on the purchase. Uh, the one question I do have for the Public Works Department, um, I know there are a lot of streets that have had fog seals, uh, here recently, um, some particularly in my district that I drove around and saw, but there are a lot of large cracks that are still in those streets. Are we going to be going back and see, uh, um, using this machine to seal those cracks?
Yes, we will. We'll be using the existing machine, we know, actually to do that, but this new machine will be used next year.
Okay. Uh, so I assume you already have a, a timeline as to when those, those, uh, seals are going to be done?
Uh, we do it as we have the ability with staff to do it. Currently, we're doing quite a bit of work, but we're, we're moving in the streets out. We're doing it every day, we're doing some of that work.
Okay.
We do, we don't, we have a very tight timeline, um, because of the weather and we're trying to get to all of them.
So it's, it's not scheduled, uh, in any particular area? It's, it's just that you're doing them as staff has time?
No, the, the Streets Department, the Streets Division has scheduled them because they do one area at a time. I just don't have that scheduled.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you later about the schedule.
The, uh, the one thing you will notice about this bid, we did take the second bidder, uh, at quite a difference in price, and the reason is the, 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 uh, the lowest bid did not meet 19, 19 of our specs, 19 of our specs did not meet.
And, and I-
So it was, it was basically down to the same-
Yeah.
-machine.
And, and, um, I think the council understands that if, if another bid is taken, it's not the lowest bid, that you're not, the, the bidder is not meeting apples to apples, uh, according to the request of the city. Okay, thank you for the answer. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm, uh, prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept item Q on the consent agenda as submitted.
Mr. Jones?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Jones, for the approval of item Q on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 8A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of an ordinance to amend and restate Article 34, Chapter 3 of Title IX of the Los Banas Municipal Code regarding density bonuses and other affordable housing development incentives. And, uh, then we're going to go to 8A1 for approval, and it's ordinance number 1175, amending and restating Article 34, Chapter 3 of Title IX of the Los Banas Municipal Code regarding density bonuses and other affordable housing development incentives. And we're going to go to Community Director Elms for an explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Um, so as you may recall, back on October 2nd, 2019, the Los Banas City Council opened the public hearing, closed the public hearing, and waived the first reading and introduced ordinance number 1175 by title. Uh, this particular amendment and restating of Article 34 is in keeping with the state's density bonus requirements. Um, all local governments are required to adopt local ordinances that are consistent with state law. Currently, our density bonus ordinance, um, which was last updated in 2010, and before that, it was originally written in about 2006, um, new laws have been adopted, and the City of Los Banas, we are required to be consistent with state law as the state law is the default. Um, so since that time, there's been many legislative updates that, um, need to be adopted within our ordinance. And this concerns affordable housing and in particular, density bonus. And just, I won't go into great detail what density bonus is, but essentially, uh, just for the, the education of the students here tonight, what a density bonus is, is an incentive to a developer to build affordable housing. And so what that developer gets, uh, for the amount of affordable housing they provide in a particular project, if they provide a certain percentage, then they're given, and those are target units for affordable housing, they're given extra density, more units at market rate so that their project can pencil out. This is a regular, it's a, a mandate by the state of California. Cities are required to provide density bonus, so this is not something that the city can deny when a developer comes before us. Um, but we do have the ability to look at the regulation and make sure that it meets the city's requirements in, in the sections, in the parts that we can regulate. Um, so with that, I am asking that the city council, uh, waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 1175 by title, and that concludes my report.
And, uh, now we'll go to the, are there any questions from council first, before opening a public hearing? Okay? Okay, this is a public hearing, and so is there anyone who wishes to speak on ordinance number 1175? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And, uh, council, any further discussion on this? Okay, we have two actions, waive the second reading and the adoption. Okay, who would like to go? Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of, of, as stated by title, excuse me.
Okay. All right, I have a motion from Sant- do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
Uh, second, please.
Okay. Motion by Santos, second by Jones for the waiving of, uh, for second reading of ordinance number 1175. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Santos, let's, go ahead and press. Okay?
All right, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, adopt ordinance number 1175 as stated.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Second.
A motion by Santos for the adoption of ordinance number 1175, and second by Jones. Uh, Director Maloney, roll call vote?
Maria? Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Paul Walton?
Yes, motion carried. Let's go on to item B, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of a conditional use permit number 2019-03 to allow for the sale of alcohol under a type 41 on-sale beer and wine license for a bona fide eating place located at 1101 F Street, APN 025152009. Applicant John C. Bastillos. And Stacy, go to you?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Um, so there's a PowerPoint presentation with this item.
Okay. One, two.
Okay, so this particular proposal, um, before you tonight is a request for a type 41 alcohol license. This is for beer and wine to be served in conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment. This is for a restaurant that's proposing to be open seven days a week, Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And it is located within the general commercial zoning district. The location of the project is 1101 F Street, which is the southeast corner of F and San Juan Street within the City of Los Banas. Currently, this is an infill project, infill development. Uh, site plan review was approved by the Planning Commission on August 28th, 2019 for the construction of a 5,156 square foot commercial structure, uh, which will serve as a smog shop as well as a special, specialty eatery area. According to SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this project has been deemed categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15332, in that it is an infill development less than five acres and can be served by existing services. The use permit analysis, uh, within the staff report, there's a thorough analysis of the general use permit criteria that are established by the municipal code, um, and there are findings and evidence within the staff report and the resolution which support those general findings. Uh, then there are specific on-sale and off-sale alcoholic beverage criteria within the code as well, which this project, uh, does satisfy. And then ABC, which is the Alcoholic Beverage Control, is the issuing authority, which is the state of California. So the census tract, this particular project is located in Census Tract 22.01. Currently, there are 11 on-sale licenses within this particular census tract, and this would be the 12th to serve the community of Los Banas. This is a diagram of the floor plan and security plan that is proposed within the restaurant. There is also a condition of approval that requires not only interior cameras, but exterior as well to the satisfaction of our police chief. And these are the elevations that were approved by the Planning Commission. This is, um, the top elevation is the front entrance. And then a side elevation, which is the west elevation, and then the south and east elevations. Uh, this particular, although the council is not reviewing elevations tonight, nor the site plan, um, this is in keeping with the neighborhood and the automotive repair shop next door. This is the vacant lot, just so, um, the council could see, the southeast corner of F and San Juan. Public comment, a public hearing notice was published in the Los Banas Enterprise and mailed to the 300-foot radius on October 25th, 2019, and as of today's date, no comments have been received. As I stated, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 9th as a recommending body to the city council on this particular conditional use permit and recommended approval to Los Banas City Council. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council open the public hearing and close the public hearing, and then adopt Resolution 6156, approving conditional use permit number 2019-03 as conditioned and SEQA exemption for the use of a type 41 alcohol license at 1101 F Street. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, any comments from council at this time? Okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing on, uh, city council resolution number 6156. For anyone who wishes to speak. Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council.
council level. And council, any further questions? Okay, City Council Resolution Number six-one-five-six binding the proposed project to be categorically exempt from the California- Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section fifteen-three-three-two, infill development projects and approving conditional use permit number two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-three to allow the sale of alcohol under a type forty-one on beer and wine license at one-one-zero-one F Street, APN zero-two-five-one-five-two-zero-zero-nine. Hey, do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos?
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve, or, I'm sorry, City Resolution Number six-one-five-six with also a comment there that I'm glad to see there's an infill going in there, it'll be nice in that area.
For a minute there, I thought it was going to be smog and alcohol, but I said, wait a minute here, we've got two buildings. Okay, all right. All right, Mr. Jones?
Second.
All right, so we have Mrs. Santos, motion to approve City Council Resolution Number six-one-five-six, and second by Jones. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Item nine, consideration of Ordinance Number one-one-seven-six, amending Title II, Chapter two, Article two of the Los Angeles Municipal Code to create Planning Commission districts, amend the number of members and manner of appointment, length and terms of absences. And this is a second reading and adoption, and who are we going to? Director Elms?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This particular item is a second reading, so back on October 2nd, two thousand and nineteen, the City Council waived the first reading and introduced Ordinance Number one-one-seven-six by title. This particular ordinance is proposing to create Planning Commission districts, which would coordinate and follow the particular district that that council member is in. So the terms, currently, we have two-year terms, and it would create four-year terms that coincide with that city council member's term, and it would decrease our seven-member commission to five, also to coordinate with the city councils. So there would be four district planning commissioners and one commissioner-at-large, which would be representing the mayor and would be, would run consistent with the mayor's term, which is a two-year term. This particular item, since this particular item was, was first read within the first reading, the Planning Commission has experienced a loss, we lost a planning commissioner, and we also have another planning commissioner that is very ill. So the, the next couple of agenda items, I will be proposing to fill those vacancies, but I did want to let the council know that at the next city council meeting, staff is proposing to bring an urgency ordinance before the council to have a, the five-member commission become effective on November twentieth. With this second reading, we didn't have enough time to prepare an urgency ordinance, so we, we will be proposing that on November twentieth. But with the, the loss of our planning commissioner, Commissioner Mona Giuliani, we will be proposing that urgency ordinance, but for tonight, we're just asking for a second reading to create Planning Commission districts, amend the number of planning commissioners from seven to five, and then the length of their terms for the district planning commissioners to be four-year terms, and then the mayor's at-large member to be a two-year term. And then for the policy regard, regarding absences, that, that would be limited to three consecutive absences, including adjourned and special meetings, and then no more than four absences within a twelve-month period. So that concludes my report, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions of Director Elms at this time? Okay, so this is also a public hearing, is that correct? No, this is not. Oh, okay. All right, so we have two motions that need to be accomplished, and one is the waiving of the second reading, and then the adoption of consideration of Ordinance Number one-one-seven-six, amending Title II, Chapter two, Article two of the Los Angeles Municipal Code to create Planning Commission districts, amend the number of members, and the manner of appointment, length and terms of absences. And, Mr. Jones?
I'd still on for last thing.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Deborah would like to.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance Number one-one-seven-six.
Waive, waive the second reading. Yeah.
I'm getting to that. Consider the waiving of the second reading for Ordinance Number one-one-seven-six.
Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis and second by Jones for the waiving of the, the second reading of Ordinance Number one-one-seven-six. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis, go ahead and, wait a minute, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number one-one-seven-six as read by title.
Okay, and, Mr. Jones?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Jones for the adoption of Ordinance Number one-one-seven-six. Director Maloney, roll call vote?
Faria? Johnson-Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Palwalta?
Yes, motion carried. Okay. Okay, let's go on to Item ten. Notice and announcement of vacancies and appointment of council members to serve on the selection committees for the following commissions committees. And Director Maloney, do you want to say a few words on this?
Do you just want to read through what we're doing and go one by one?
That would be great.
Okay.
And then you can tell me who the assigned person is.
Right.
Okay?
The first item is for the Airport Advisory Commission. There's four vacancies. There's two two-year terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and two unexpired terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Okay.
And the council member next on the list is Deborah Lewis.
Okay, I will make the motion to approve Item A as read by title. Do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Santos, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Director Maloney?
And the next item is Economic Development Advisory Commission. There are three vacancies. There's one two-year term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and there's two unexpired terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Okay.
And I believe that Councilmember Faria and Councilmember Lewis are on the EDAC committee, so the next one listed to be on the selection committee is Councilmember Jones.
Okay, motion by the mayor to approve Item B is read by title, including Mr. Jones as the, as the designated individual to help with the interviewing. Do I have a second? Mrs. Lewis?
Second motion.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Mrs. Lewis to approve Item B. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Item C?
The next item is the Parks and Recreation Commission. There are two vacancies, two two-year terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and Councilmember Faria is next on the list to be on the committee.
Okay. All right, I will make a motion to approve Item C as read by title with Mr. Faria in, working in conjunction with the mayor to, to interview the Parks and Recreation Commission applications. Do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
Second.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Jones for Item C, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to Item D.
The next is the Tree Commission. There are three vacancies, three two-year terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and the next on the list is Mayor Protem Johnson-Santos.
Okay, I will motion to approve Item D with the Tree Commission, with Mrs. Santos working in conjunction with the mayor for the interview process. Do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Santos, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Item E?
Now we have the Measure H Committee. There are two vacancies, two two-year terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and Councilmember Lewis is next to be on the committee.
Okay, for motion to approve Item E is stated with Mrs. Lewis working in conjunction with the mayor on the interview process. Mrs. Lewis?
Oh, that was from the last one, but I'll go on in second motion.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Lewis for approval of Item E. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to Measure P Committee.
There are three vacancies, three three-year terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, but the police chief and fire chief make the selections and bring those to you for approval.
Oh, good, okay.
So this is just an announcement.
All right. Fantastic, do we need to approve that? Approve those two?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay, let's go on to Item eleven, consideration of approval to advertise for emergency Planning Commission vacancies. And we're going to go to Director Elms for that?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So as I previously stated in the ordinance reading of one-one-seven-six, this particular item is coming forth to the City Council due to the recent emergency vacancies that have happened within the last week. So as I stated, we are proposing an urgency ordinance. That previous ordinance that was the waiving of the second reading would only become effective in thirty days. So this, that particular ordinance would become effective on December sixth, and in order for the planning department, the Community and Economic Development Department, to continue to conduct business and review projects, the Planning Commission does need to continue on with business, and we would be requesting that the council dispense of our typical advertising process and allow the filling of the current vacancies at the City Council meeting on November twentieth. Currently, right now, there is only one vacancy, the one planning commissioner that is unable to attend due to illness. Once we adopt an urgency ordinance, which staff is proposing, as I stated, on November twentieth, we would be able to meet quorum with a five-member Planning Commission. This would allow us to fill the current vacancy, and what staff is proposing is that, that vacancy, that this would be an interim position that would serve until December thirty-first, as we are requesting that this position be filled within the next two weeks. And we are essentially looking for applicants to be evaluated if they have past experience on the Planning Commission and/or have any planning experience. So we are going to be looking for those folks in the community that can serve in that capacity for this interim period. I do want to highlight, though, for the council's consideration, staff's recommendation is just for an interim period, although the council could choose to have this particular member serve until that their term would end, which would be in one year. All terms are, are expiring on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, or could serve until we are able to advertise, as is typically done, and find a replacement. As what is written within your staff report, it's just due to the urgency and the amount of time that we have to fill the vacancy within, by the end of the year. So I hope that's clear, and if the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So are we filling one vacancy then?
Currently, right now, we do not have the resignation of our, our planning commissioner that is ill at this time. I do not know when Commissioner Dees will be back and able to attend meetings at this point, but with a member, with a five-member Planning Commission, we should be okay to meet quorum.
Could be a four.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, questions from council? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, my question is for our city attorney. At this particular time, we don't know when one of the commissioners will be back, which means that we will only have a four-member commission. If any one person is absent, will, will there still be a quorum?
Go ahead.
So just some background, right now, the way the ordinance stands is you have a seven-member commission, so for the next thirty days, you have a seven, seven-member commission unless you adopt an urgency ordinance at the next council meeting. So the ordinance requires that there be four commissioners present for a quorum, and you have, out of that seven-member commission, you have two unfilled vacancies that were anticipated as we were reducing down to five, but then recently, we have this other vacancy. So practically speaking, you only have four members currently, and one of them is ill, so there's no, does not look like you can reach a quorum. So if you were to fill that vacancy as proposed by Ms. Elms, then you would have your four members who could, if they all showed up, be a quorum. And then after November twenty-first, I believe it is, which is the next meeting, if the council adopts the urgency ordinance, the Planning Commission would drop down to five members, and you would only need three members present at a meeting for a quorum. So, so in answer to your question, yes, by filling this vacancy, you have more of a chance of having a quorum going forward as opposed to waiting and advertising through our regular process, which could take the next sixty days or so. So is that, did that?
Yeah, that, that answers that question. At our last meeting, one of the concerns that I had is that I was the only council member that didn't have anyone in their district appointed to represent a district, and now we have two. So can someone explain to me how this is going to work? Are we going to appoint a commissioner back to the, the absolute vacancy, or how is this going to work?
So currently, you have a policy to attempt to fill the vacancies so that there are four members on the commission representing each one of the four electoral districts within the city, and then the one at large, which is the mayor's appointment. Because that just took effect this year, there's kind of a lopsided presence on the commission in terms of achieving one member per each district. And so the thought with the ordinance that you had adopted tonight was that all of those seats will, will expire in two thousand and twenty to start coinciding with the election process, and so it will be a situation where in two thousand and twenty, you should be able to fill all of those seats with the district representatives so that as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, or January first, two thousand and twenty-one, it'll all line up so that you have the appropriate amount of district membership. Right now, because of the vacancy that was created by the death of one of the planning commissioners, I believe she was from District-
Two.
Two. So there would be, right now, a vacancy, no representative from District Two, and no representative from your district, I believe, is the way it works out. So I don't know what the, I don't know what the recommendation is as to whether to try to pull a applicant from one of those two districts- to pull an applicant from one of those two districts, one of those districts, one of the four districts. I think staff would be looking to at least fill the, one, this vacancy with somebody from one of those two districts would be the priority if possible.
Yes.
So that we don't, right now, I think we have three from District Three, is that right?
We do.
And so it would be not a good position to be in to have another one from District Three. It just makes it more lopsided. So the idea would be to pull from the two districts that are now unrepresentative, which would be your district and Mr. Faria's district, assuming we can reach out to someone to fill that interim position from one of those districts. So I don't think staff has a preference as to which district that would be, but that we would try to pull from those two districts and, you know, choose the best candidate from one of those two districts as quickly as possible.
And I would assume also that if there were candidates, maybe from both districts or maybe one district, that the two council members that serve those districts would be in the interview process.
We, I think what we're trying to do is kind of dispense with the current system. And so we're kind of like making the process, we're reacting to what's happening in terms of what type of candidate we get from what district. So I think it would be appropriate that if there are candidates from those districts, that the council person from those districts be involved in the selection as well. So for instance, if you get one from each of them, then I think we would have, we would propose that both councilmen be involved so that we can figure that out to fill that position.
So what staff is proposing is that we would evaluate the applications and bring forward those nominations for the council on November 20th. And the council can make that decision. This, though, is just an interim. There's essentially, would be one, probably a special meeting would be held before Thanksgiving to continue to conduct business, business that's been pending since we did not have a quorum our last meeting, and that meeting had to be continued essentially. And then there's only one meeting in December as Christmas falls on a regularly scheduled Planning Commission date. So this interim person would only essentially be there for two meetings.
So what I'm hearing from Stacy is that staff would evaluate the candidates and bring them forward to you, and as a council, you would choose between the applicants.
One of the things that I also like to suggest is that whichever candidate is chosen via District Two or District Four, I think Tom's district is Two, that we might consider going beyond just the interim time. You know, that's a really short period of time for anybody to serve. And if we're going to invest time as council members to go out and seek someone to fill those positions, I think we should probably let it organically move forward to the end of the term.
Yeah, I think that staff would make the recommendation that that would be up to the council the night that you select whoever it is you select. You can also set the term, but that the term not exceed that December 31st, 2020 date where all of them are going to fall off, and that's when you're going to start getting your...
That sounds appropriate to me.
So we could evaluate the applicants, bring those forward to you with a recommendation as to the applicant, as well as the length of the term. And then the City Council as a group can decide both those questions on the 20th.
Yes.
So Stacy, do you, so the evaluation of the applicants is going to be done by staff, then?
Yes, so they would complete a commission application, which is available online, just as they typically would. We would receive those applications through the city clerk's office. And then we would receive those applications. Essentially, what we're saying is up until November 20th, and we would bring those applications before the City Council. I would like, though, to be able to evaluate, obviously, before the City Council meeting. I'm quite honestly not anticipating a flood of applications as it's been difficult to get Planning Commissioners just to serve the regular terms. So, and as I previously stated, I will be looking and would be making the highest recommendation of folks that have experience serving on the Planning Commission or some sort of planning experience. So there isn't a learning curve.
The best-case scenario would be for the districts to be represented, that those council people bring people to staff that, you know, we can bring forward to the full council. So again, this is just because of the circumstances we find ourselves in. The Planning Commission really cannot, excuse me, conduct business right now until we get this, at least this one seat filled, and until we get that urgency ordinance adopted. So we go back to the regular selection process once this issue is resolved.
So are you going to bring us all the names or just the recommendation?
It depends on what we receive. And as I stated, I don't anticipate that we're going to receive many. I do believe we'll maybe receive a handful, and staff will give you a recommendation from those names.
Okay. All right. So again, this is just an interim situation with a, what we're trying to come up with is a streamlined process. It takes typically 45 to 60 days to go through the regular process, scheduling and so on and so forth, the advertising. So kind of our plan is to reach out ourselves to applicants as opposed to waiting for them to come to us through an advertising campaign. So we're kind of looking to the council, too, especially the members from those districts, to do some recruiting for us in the next 14 days.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm getting at is we interview for other positions, for other commissions, and we don't bring all the names forward, we just bring the recommendation forward. And so...
If that's at the pleasure of the council?
Yeah, because I don't want to hurt anybody. You know, I mean, if a staff recommendation, it's, I mean, you bring everybody's name forward, and then, you know, it's like picking the winning ticket. One person's going to be happy, and everyone else is going to get mad at you.
Well, it would be kind of hard to evaluate staff's recommendation without us at least giving you some type of narrative as to the selection or the recommendation that staff's making, but we'll try to be mindful of what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, that's all I'm asking.
I would like to also interject on that is we're beginning to move into our district. So now is an opportune time for council members to reach out to their district, find someone appropriate, submit those names, and move forward. I don't think this is about hurting anybody. This is about moving forward, getting business done, and setting the criteria that our council has voted for, which is having each council member find someone in their district to represent. And if there's more than one candidate that that person comes up with, then, you know, the evaluation process can take forward. But I'm certainly, you know, in favor of each council member having that opportunity to bring someone to represent their district.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just saying that we never bring all the names forward when we interview a number of people.
Yeah, but it's changing now.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. Just be mindful, that's all I ask. Okay. All right, so...
So we're, staff's looking for direction. If what we've discussed tonight is what you think is appropriate, we'll move forward with that. If you can make a motion that we can dispense with the formal advertising for this particular position, that we will try to fill it as...
Yeah. You're on.
Quickly as possible, and that staff will bring forward the name as opposed to the normal protocol.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, if there are no further questions, I mean, questions of council for staff, I'd like to make a motion. We don't have anything formally written here, but our city attorney has just stated the criteria for moving forward with advertising and dispensing of it, and moving forward with getting this on our next agenda for the appointment of the Planning Commissioner, Planning Commissioner, Commissioner or Commissioners. So with that, I'd like to make a motion. I'm not sure if I can state that.
I think that's fine.
Turned off?
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Mrs. Santos?
I second that.
Okay. Motioned by Lewis, what the attorney said, and seconded by Johnson Santos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, let's go on to, oh, let's take a break for a few minutes, about 5, 10-minute break, 5-minute break, and we'll be right back. Okay, we're back in session at 8:39. Oh, we're Mr. Brett? Okay. Okay, it's 8:40, we're back in session. And let's go on to item number 12. Consideration of funding options for Pioneer Road Widening Project. And we're going to City Manager Terazas, and he has... And he has a PowerPoint?
Two, three.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll jump right into my presentation. But Mr. Dela Cruz, I hope you took roll call after all the students left. So, anyway, and I won't take offense if the room cleared out for my presentation either, so.
I knew you were coming here.
Anyway, all joking aside, so we are in the process of, in the project development process for the Pioneer Road Widening Project, which is the widening Pioneer to four lanes, installing a Class 1 bike trail, and making other improvements to the roadway. As part of the agenda tonight, the council did approve a funding agreement with MCAAG, which sets up a mechanism to receive and spend money on the project, so that's a good thing. We're also moving forward with a Caltrans-funded specific plan to do some of the design, preliminary design, conceptual design, and public outreach for the project. We're appreciative of the Caltrans providing that funding for that specific plan. We are moving forward with conducting and completing our project study report. We have an RFQ out to find an engineering firm to do that project study report. That PSR is an important part of the project development as we move forward with the project. But as with any other transportation project, we need to figure out how to find construction funding for the project. So, we're in the process of developing a construction funding plan. And as part of that process, we've, the MCAAG staff has developed what is essentially a laundry list of funding options and opportunities for the project. We do have funding for design and right-of-way acquisition. That's funded at $8.6 million, and we're using Measure V regional funds to do the design and right-of-way acquisition. But again, we're in the process, in the beginning stages of looking for construction funding, and our preliminary estimates are about $36.4 million for construction of the Pioneer improvements. And again, MCAAG has, staff has developed a laundry list of funding options. They've divided those options into what they call MCAAG-controlled funding, and then other agency funding. The list is included in your staff report. I'll run through them real quickly here. Neither I or Mark are really experts at this funding. I think part of, part of tonight is, well, the purpose of tonight is for the council to provide staff direction to become better familiar with these funding sources, become better familiar with the deadlines for the application process, and to move forward with finding out more information about potential funding sources. So, the list is here and in your staff report, ranges from RTIP STIP funding, Measure V regional funding, local partnership funding, which becomes available as a result of being a self-help county, highway infrastructure program funding, CMAC funding, and then for those other funding sources that aren't necessarily controlled by MCAAG, they do list Measure V local, which would be under the control of you as the city council, SB 1 competitive, SB 1, I'm sorry, competitive local partnership program funds, SB 1 trade corridor funds, ITIP, lots of acronyms in transportation planning, so I apologize for that, interregional transportation improvement program funds, and then a couple of different federal highly competitive grant programs that could be available, available as a potential funding source. And then although it was not included in the MCAAG list, we are also, we have also initiated discussions with the county to explore opportunities for Measure V local county funds for Pioneer Road project. And we will be meeting with county staff within the next couple of weeks. Public Works Director and I will be meeting with county staff to begin talking with them about having access to some of those Measure V local funds, county funds. Again, with that, at this point, it's a laundry list of potential funding sources. Really looking for direction from the council to proceed with exploring all the funding options, proceed with working with other governmental agencies to explore funding options, both at the state and federal level, proceed with working with our elected officials at the State Assembly and Senate, as well as our federal representatives as well. So, again, just looking for direction, make sure we're on the same path and a good path to explore funding for the project. So, that concludes my presentation, open and available for questions, both myself and Mr. Fajian. That's it.
Okay, council members, questions? Anyone? Well, item 12 and 13 are conjoined, and so I'll start out with, with, you know, my analysis of what's happened so far. If you look over the funding options, the funding options are future money. And so, nothing is put towards Pioneer at this time. And I would ask the council, what is your timeline to construct this project? At the minimum, it's going to be four to five years. The Brett and I and Alex met with the Director of District 10 for Caltrans, and we were talking about 18 months for the PSR, the project study report, and he wants to do it in 12 months. And I think he sees the need. But item 12 and item 13, item 13 is a request for $5 million from the current STIP funds of $29 million. And I'm hoping the council sees to approve that. But with 42,000 cars and 33% to 34% of the crashes on 152, we can't wait another 10 years to build this road. We need to build this as fast as we can. So, you know, one thing kind of confuses me about these, about these projects. We've always talked about the need for 152 and to divert traffic and have something else, but, you know, no one's ever answered one question for me. Is Highway 152 safe in its current configuration? And I don't think local staff should answer that, because it's not our road. So, if someone, if you guys, if anyone here could, staff could get me an answer from Caltrans, and what is their answer? Is 152, under its current configuration, is it adequate? Is it, is it, is it a road that's safe to travel on? And I think the answer that comes back will tell us when funding's going to be available. So, if I was to give Alex direction, I would tell him go after every dime he can and explore every option that's out there for the money. But I will also say that projects move ahead of ours. Why does that happen and continually happen over the years? Why do other projects move ahead of 152? Is it because 152 is not a need? Is it because 152 is adequate for the, for the traffics, the number, the traffic, the number of cars and the number of signals that we have? Is it, is that the reason? Because the project on the east side that we're competing with is an economic development project. And, and I'm just curious to know. I mean, I would like someone to tell me, in its current configuration, is 152 doing the job that it needs to do for us? So, I'm asking the staff to find that out. And I know we can't answer that question, because it's not our road. So, I would say go after every dime that you can. But the list that I'm looking at here, it infringes upon, with Measure V, other projects that may come up on the west side. And we're basically asking for most of the money, or all of it, that, that we're cobbling together. And I just don't know if that's going to fly with the West Side Measure V Committee. So, those are my thoughts. Mr. Jones?
Let's talk about those other projects that may come up and weigh the pros and cons. I mean, that would be a simple solution there. I mean, if the other projects are minor, then it's probably a pretty easy decision. If they're major, if they're maintenance items, things like that, maybe we can prolong it.
But that, see, but that, that decision wouldn't be up to this council, because it would be up to the West Side Measure V Committee. And...
It would be, but we're, you're looking to ask for direction to ask for that, 5 million.
Oh, no, that's, that's, that's different money.
That's different.
That's different money. Yeah, there's, the Measure V is comprised of three pots. And the three pots are, Alex, please help me with this. Okay, the three pots are local Measure V money, of which every city and county gets. Now, in the case of Los Vanos, we get $765,000, somewhere around there, Mark? Okay, we get $765,000 a year, local money. And 20% of that has to be used for sidewalks and air-related projects, and that's how the money that we're using to do the sidewalks and the curbs and gutters over at the state streets. Okay, so we get about $768,000 a year. Then, there's west-side regional money and east-side regional money. That goes into a pot that's decided on the west side by the Mayor of Los Vanos, the Mayor of Gustine, the Mayor of Dos Palos, and two of the supervisors. So, it's a five-member board that decides how to divvy up that regional money. Then, there's the east-side pot, and the east-side pot is made up of all five supervisors, and then Livingston, Antwater, and Merced. So, there's an eight-member board over there. So, they have control. When we set up Measure V, there's, they get a percentage of money, we get a percentage of money. Ours can only be spent on the west side, west of the San Joaquin River. Theirs could be east of the San Joaquin River. So, the monies don't co-mingle. Then, and then, like I said, each city has, has local Measure V funds. So, and, and those are, in the county's case, they get, I don't know, $2, $3 million a year, I don't remember what it is. And, and they can spend their money, the county spends it on county projects. So, and then MCAAG gets a percentage, 1% or something, for the, for the running of the bus system. So, that, those are the pots of money and how they're divided up. So, right now, currently, the Antwater-Merced Expressway, which is the, the project that they're going to vote on, on November 21st, they are cobbling together their money by taking all the STIP money, the state highway money, $29.63 million right now. And they want to take all that money and put it towards the Antwater-Merced Expressway. They also want to take $15 million of their local Measure V money. And they want to, they want to fund $15 million of that money to, to Antwater-Merced Expressway. Because they get a huge share, because they're the county and they have a larger population and more roads. And then, there is a...
What's, what's the other fund, do you remember, Alex, what the other funding sources were for, for AME?
There are some funding made available as a result of railroad crossings, I believe, RTIF funding.
Yeah.
And I think those are the primary sources.
Yeah, two-point, when, when we divided up all the RTIF funds, the county, we got a share of RTIF, and then the county got a share, they got $2.7 million. So, of county funds, so they're putting that towards AME, which is a total of $17.6 million of county money. And then some railroad funds that may or may not happen. So, they're going to guarantee, if the railroad funds don't come in, then they're going to guarantee $5 million of more Measure V money to, for a total of up to $15 million of money towards AME. And then they had some leftover money from the campus parkway, $10 million, that they're trying to then divert that to, to Antwater-Merced Expressway. So, those are the funding sources for that project. And when I say 12 and 13 come together, what bothers me a little bit is that if our project is such a safety issue, and we're putting two projects forward, theirs is a little bit ahead, because they have their PSR done already. But the money that's going to go towards that leaves us basically with promissory money and nothing right now. That's why Alex brought forth item 13, which is a, asking for $5 million out of the current STIP, the 29.63. So, and I think that's a great idea. And then I've asked Supervisor Solvera to bring forth $5 million out of their county Measure V money. So, that would give us a great start, then maybe the, the state of California would come up with funds, and we can build this thing in one shot in five years. Because if we have to wait 10 years, can you imagine what traffic is going to be like on 152 in five years, let alone 10 years? I mean, we've got to get this project done. So, for this item, item 12, not to, not to stray, I would say tell staff to look for every funding source available. That's all I could say for that item.
I don't see a downside, or a downside into asking for it, so.
I think what I'm hearing, unless there's other comments from the council, are there?
No.
Okay. You can buzz in and out on your own.
I'm trying.
There you go.
Thank you. So, I think what I'm hearing is pursue all available funding options, pursue working with various agencies, stakeholders. If the council wants to conclude the discussion in the form of a motion, then we'll be on our way, and Public Works Director and I will develop a funding plan, looking at all options and opportunities. I think Mark's mic is on as well.
Yeah. If I can interject a little bit, I agree with what you're doing. The schedule that we have proposed is the most aggressive schedule you could possibly have for this project. I believe there is impossibility to move it any quicker than that. That's the input that we're getting back from our engineering firms, looking at our requests for qualifications. The most, the most, excuse me?
What's the schedule? What's the year?
It's in your, it's in your report. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Lewis. Go ahead.
No, just, you know, when you say schedule, just so the public knows, what, how many years are you talking about?
We're talking construction's starting in spring 2025.
Okay.
And that's, as I said, when we put this together, we did not take the usual approach and put it conservative. We put a very, very quick timeline. The crux of the, of the funding, and it's important to look at funding sources, is having the PSR done. And the PSR from staff's level was always a 12- to 13-month document, not an 18-month document. So, we're seeing that about in the time of March 2021, just by the time we get it entered on board and stuff. It's a major lot of work, we do have... It's a major lot of work. We do have funding for it, which is really good. But that's kind of the, when you talk to people, as the county installed, it's always a crux of, do you have a PSR? But it's important to put that out there, which Alex and I are doing, especially Alex, and to look at other sources. But I think what you're going to see here, to get this built, you'll have like five or six sources of funding. It's just, we just have to have that. And it's, I think it's important to become acquainted with all the funding sources, which I'm not anywhere near an expert on, in the next year, year and a half. And then we'll actually have a PSR in place that we can actually go in there and get funding sources. I believe things like CMAC and all, we will get funding on some of the intersections and stuff on that, that's locally controlled. I believe we will get some funding from M C A G set aside, but these are small amounts, but they add up. And then I also agree we should carry over some of the current, the five million that we're talking about. I think that's a very important thing to do. That's all I have.
Just to follow up on that, we, as with any other transportation project, we will need to, like you said, Mayor, cobble together a variety of funding sources to make the project happen.
But we need to make this project happen in five years. I mean, we can't wait ten years, can't wait seven years to get this done. So that's why I want the question answered. And I'm going to keep asking this question until someone gives me an answer. Is one fifty-two adequate in its current configuration? But I don't want you answering that question because it's not fair. It's not our road.
And I don't have the extra piece to answer that question. But I believe it was four years ago, this question was asked of Caltrans, and we did not meet their safety thresholds.
Did not?
We did, at that time, we did not. And it was when we were looking at other San Diego's and LAs, that came from Caltrans at that time, and it was informal.
Wow.
Well, doesn't mean things have gotten worse, things, we've had more accidents, we have things. So I think we, maybe we ask that question again.
Okay.
And I think with the cooperation we're getting with from Caltrans, we'll get a honest, quick response on that.
You know, I mean, because that tells me, what are we doing with our funding? I mean, if we're, if we're not, if we don't have an adequate road through our town and we're throwing, and I want AME to be finished, I'd love to have them finish their project. I think it'd be fantastic. But when it comes right down to it, if there's a difference in an economic development project and a safety project, we have to do everything we can on this council to make sure that that safety project gets funded. And gets funded right away. We went down from a half-a-billion-dollar project to thirty-eight million for construction. Because we were never going to get the bypass, everybody knows that. So I don't want to dwell on history, but four years ago, if we weren't meeting safety and now, all the years later, with thirty-four percent crashes on one fifty-two, that's the aggressive stance we need to take. We've got a safety issue through Los Vanos. And the county, M C A G, and Caltrans. And if Caltrans already realizes this, everybody else needs to realize it. So do you have direction?
I do.
Okay.
I do.
All right, thank you.
May I ask a question?
You can ask anything you want.
I realize that, Mayor, you've indicated that one fifty-two has become more of a vehicular hazard over the years and the importance of getting this bypass. But what I'm hearing from staff is that this project study review has to happen before anybody forks over any money for us to move forward.
Not necessarily. It, you can, that's why item twelve, thirteen is on there. You can leave money unprogrammed.
Well, we haven't got to thirteen yet.
Okay, but that's kind of what I'm talking about.
With this one, and what I'm hearing from our city manager and from our Public Works Director is that Merced had their PSR done, we don't have it done. Are we in the progress of getting it done?
If I may, that's correct. For Pioneer Road to be eligible for STIP funding, it's required to have a project study report completed. So you're correct. That's correct. That's in the government code, that's state law.
Okay.
But what we're not, but understand that the STIP money that's available now, the twenty-nine point six-three, they don't have to program all of that. They can leave it unprogrammed. Then, when our PSR is ready, that money will be there to program to ours. That's the difference. That's the finite information.
We know how M C A G has operated in past history. Long before this money, when they would come every meeting just about and promise that, you know, the bypass was number one on the list, number one, number one, and we never had any money given to us to make that happen, other than, I think, environmental study for some ten million dollars. So, you know, this money you say is sitting there, but I guess legally, you know, what can we do to make them give us any of that money or keep it there for us for the future?
That's why I'm asking that question, is one fifty-two safe?
But that's a question that Caltrans has to answer.
Correct.
But does that have some authority with M C A G to make them hold any money for us?
Well, the STIP money has to be approved by the California Transportation Commission. Once M C A G approves a project, of which they're going to bring forth on November twenty-first, that's a recommendation to the California Transportation Commission to let them spend that STIP funding.
Which I assume you're anticipating they're going to do it on the Atwater Exchange.
I'm anticipating that they're going to do that. So if we can get an answer, that's just more information for us that we can then transfer to other agencies.
If I might, Mr. Mayor and council member, I apologize for the interruption. The discussion occurring now kind of bleeds over into the next agenda item. And these were a number of the items that I anticipated covering in the next agenda item. So my recommendation would be to conclude the current item.
I'm sorry, I stole your thought.
That's okay. You're certainly entitled to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And then transition over to the next item.
Can we close item twelve? We gave them direction on item twelve. Can we close that?
Yes.
All right, let's go on to item thirteen. Now you can repeat everything I said. Okay, item thirteen, consideration approval of City Council Resolution Number Six One Five Seven, requesting that five million dollars of State Transportation Improvement Program carryover regional improvement funds remain as unprogrammed and available for the Pioneer Road widening project. Now, let's go back to Alex. You can talk again.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I do have a presentation, so if we could queue that up.
Sure.
And maybe, Kim, if you, yes, thank you very much, Kim. So I'm going to launch right in. So M C A G is in the process of preparing what's called a Regional Transportation Improvement Program, or an RTIP. The document included in your staff report is the draft RTIP. And the RTIP is developed as part of the statewide Transportation Improvement Program, or the STIP. Again, lots of acronyms in transportation planning. The STIP is a five-year transportation budget developed by the state of California. It's prepared every two years, so there is a two-year cycle to the preparation of the STIP. The STIP provides funding for transportation projects in the county. STIP projects must have a completed project study report, so to be eligible for STIP funding. Atwater-Merced Expressway does have a PSR. Pioneer Road widening does not have a PSR. So technically, as it stands, Pioneer Road is not an eligible STIP project. The M C A G Board is scheduled to adopt the STIP at their November twenty-first meeting. Although they have said, if they do have issues in adopting the, at the twenty-first meeting, they could defer to a December meeting to adopt the STIP. The STIP is submitted to the California Transportation Commission. They are the ultimate deciding authority for state STIP dollars. And the C T C, or that is submitted to the C T C in December. The C T C approves funding or doesn't, could actually not to approve funding in projects that are contained in, that could be contained in our STIP. And we anticipate that the C T C would take action
Wait, sorry.
That's okay, in March of twenty-twenty. So STIP goes to C T C in December, and again, would likely be approved by them in March. So how much STIP funding is available? Currently, there's twenty-six million and change, currently unprogrammed. STIP funding, another three-point-three in what's called a target share of STIP funding for a total of available STIP funding in this current cycle of a little over twenty-nine million dollars of STIP funding. So what does the draft STIP propose that's in your agenda packet and it's making its way through the public process? It's proposing to program twenty-nine million dollars to AME Phase One B. And then it also establishes Pioneer Road widening as a priority for future STIP funding. Doesn't set aside any funding for Pioneer, doesn't designate any funding for Pioneer. It merely establishes Pioneer as a priority for future STIP funding. And again, because Pioneer doesn't have a PSR, it is not currently an eligible project. So if approved by the C T C, that would leave no unprogrammed funds for Pioneer Road or other projects in the county. And that, at least from the staff's perspective, creates a funding challenge for the Pioneer project. If there were five million unprogrammed, it would be five million dollars less. We would have to scrape and scrap for it to get this project built. So as a result, staff's recommending that five million dollars of STIP funding remain unprogrammed. If this were to occur, doesn't guarantee funding for Pioneer, just kind of leaves it set aside and available in a future STIP cycle, two years from now, for funding for Pioneer. It's ultimately, again, a decision that would be made by the governing board, M C A G governing board. And then even beyond that, the final decision and the final authority is the California Transportation Commission. They could reprioritize that money, they could do something different with that money based on whatever the priorities are at the state level for transportation dollars. So with that, the staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution, that formatting got crazy, requesting five million dollars of state STIP regional funds remain as unprogrammed and available for the Pioneer project. That concludes my presentation.
Alex, is it possible to add, amend this to include the five-million-dollar ask for the Measure V funds from the county? Because I've already done that, and Mr. Silveira is taking that to the board.
I think, Mr. City Attorney, you might chime in, we can amend the resolution, add that. You might want to update the council on that request to the supervisor.
The other thing I was going to maybe throw in was along the lines of what the mayor was talking about in terms of Caltrans deeming one fifty-two unsafe, that we may, in this resolution, want to add a whereas that indicates that. Do you disagree, Mark?
I do for this resolution. I think it's a good thing to ask them to look at that, but to put it in the resolution when we're referring to funding, I personally don't think it's, I personally don't think it's in the right resolution, but I could be wrong. It's up to what you would like. Because then you'd be determining on what and when and what Caltrans uses it back to us instead of what we're asking for funding. I just, it's whatever you see, though.
Okay, well, I'll defer to that. I was just thinking out loud as to whether a whereas that indicated that this was, would alleviate the one fifty-two issue or help alleviate it by unprogramming or not programming five million to go to this project. It just seems to me that might, it kind of strengthens the position, but I'm not sure.
Well, if you could craft some language that would go in there that would strengthen it, I wouldn't be opposed to that. And then still keeps in tone with Mark was saying.
Well, I'm only mildly concerned about it because, again, I'm not as anyone else up here. I don't think, I'm not an expert on the C T C or state funding. And I don't want to like add something that's going to be, end up with a negative result for this. So you might give us the ability to mold this resolution if we think we need to. But that was just a, I don't know, that's something we can resolve tonight.
How about adding that we are consulting with Caltrans to receive an opinion stated four years ago that the roads did not meet the rigors of the traffic that
Well, just thinking out loud that if you're able to do that by November twenty-first, it really doesn't need to be in this resolution. It could be something that is introduced to the M C A G governing board in their public hearing.
Okay.
Just so that's something on in the record.
I like that.
You could also, so, you know, whereas the city council views state route one fifty-two as a major safety issue, I wouldn't reference four years ago because I don't know exactly the date that happened. And I don't even have a document, but I know it did happen. So I wouldn't reference something that I can't produce to you, but I know that that was done. It was during a time where we were looking at some kind of safety grant. And I know that came through in a correspondence.
So I'm thinking this council can state that it's their opinion that that one fifty-two is a public safety issue to those citizens and anyone traveling on that road. It just strengthens the argument that five million ought to be unprogrammed for that. I don't know that it'll be convincing to the M C A G governing board, but you have something at least in the public record when C T C looks at it, says, wait a minute, what about this? What's going on on one fifty-two with this money as well?
I like that.
So, I mean, you crafted the resolution, do you see a problem with adding?
I think we could add something related to safety in the council's concern, council's concern regarding safety to the resolution. I think we can do that, in a way that wouldn't jeopardize or mistake.
We don't want to misstate what the state's position is on it, if we don't know. But certainly, the council can take some position on it.
I think we can do that.
That would be the only thing I would add to the resolution, other than what you were talking about in terms of the local funding.
Yes, I'll talk about that now. So I'm not opposed to building any project. I'd like to see everything go forward, but I'll be right with you. Yeah, no, no, I understand. I just wanted to finish my thought. And I'm not opposed to any of these projects going forward, even the Atwater-Merced Expressway. But as our city manager, Tarazza, said, one project should not impact another project for their construction. Mrs. Lewis.
And Alex, help me, you may have already stated this, and maybe I've forgotten. How long does it take to complete a project study review?
Typically, Mark, chime in if I'm straying. Typically, it's about eighteen months. We thought comfortably it could be done in eighteen months. We are certainly narrowing that and anticipating and expecting the engineering firm we bring on board to complete it in a year.
So we're still searching for that engineering?
We are, we are. We've met with District Ten Director, Caltrans Director, Dan McElhaney. He thinks we can get it done in a year. And he's offered to work with us and work with our engineering firm to meet that goal. So we appear to do appear to have some support from Caltrans, and that's encouraging as we move forward with the project.
So when the proposal is completed by M C A G, it was indicated that it has to be sent to the State Transportation Board for them to allocate the money to be spent for the projects that are being requested to be done? Or they have the option to reprogram that money to whatever they want to do? Or does it have to be within our county?
So it's my understanding that C T C could, could reallocate state funding. They're, they're actually currently, there's been a current proposal to, to move around current funding and reallocate it based on, I believe, the governor's priorities. So even if a program is in the STIP, even if a program has local support, that doesn't necessarily mean the Transportation Commission has to approve the STIP. We've seen that in regard to the bypass. The bypass was in a STIP in, what was it, 2014? I think it's mentioned in, in this draft of the STIP for, what was it, for, I don't know the dollar amount, but the C T C didn't approve that funding. So even if there's a project in the STIP that's, that's recommended for funding, the C T C does not necessarily have to approve that funding. So there's really very few guarantees in the transportation.
Well, tell them that's why the, the money's there right now.
That's, you're absolutely correct. One of, one of the reasons there is that available STIP funding is because the bypass didn't move forward. If, if the bypass were moving forward, I think we'd be having a different conversation today.
So the, the money that's there was for the City of Los Banos and the bypass?
Oh, well, at one point, there, there was a request for that funding to go to the bypass, correct?
This is actually the, the second time, the first phase of Atwater Merced Expressway, they took the bypass money from STIP and built A M E the first time. I'm thinking eight, nine years ago. Now they're doing it again and putting all that money toward it and trying to build the second phase of A M E. So it's been built kind of on our backs and our safety project. That's why it's important to find out what Caltrans thinks of that road. So let me explain the money, I know Mr. Jones wants to speak. I had a meeting with Mr. Silvera, and I asked him for $5 million of the Measure V funds. They're putting $15 million of their county funds, up to 15, towards the Atwater Merced Expressway. I asked them for $5 million to be programmed towards our project. The closer we can get to this number, the closer Caltrans is going to say, well, we've got some money and we can build this whole project. Because like I said, we can't wait this 10 years. So he is bringing that forward, but there's a catch here. And the catch is, they're going to vote on A M E on November 21st. Staff, I'm asking you to find out definitive answer before November 19th, because November 19th is when the county budget, or the county, the second meeting of, of the county occurs. So are they going to program that 5 million for, are they going to agree to the STIP? And are they going to agree to the 5 million for the, for the county Measure V? Because it puts me in a position that on November 21st, I don't think this council wants me to vote for A M E as a project. I think that'd look pretty stupid if I'm supporting A M E and, and no one's supporting us. So, but we have another meeting on the 20th, the day, the night before the, the M C A G meeting. The county's on the 19th, our next council meeting's on the 20th, and they're going to decide A M E or whatever on the 21st. So you can give me direction on the voting on the 20th. And if the county agrees to program that $10 million from two, or make a recommendation for the STIP to withhold five, and $5 million from the, the county Measure V funds, that's a $10 million start, then there's another five of STIP coming in, that's 15 million, then we have C Mac, we could cobble together maybe 20, by, by the time of construction, we could have 20, 25 million dollars towards a $38 million project.
Alex, what's the chances of having any kind of answer from Caltrans about the, the critical safety issues on 152?
We, we can certain, we can certainly ask, we can certainly ask. I don't, I don't know how quickly they can get, get back to us. I do, again, do know we, we do have a good working relationship with the new district director. We've actually seen him fairly regularly these days, and that's a good thing, but we can certainly ask. I just, I just don't know how quickly they can get back to us.
Let's hope quickly. So, Mr. Jones?
I think Councilmember Lewis asked the, the question I was going to ask, but I just want to confirm. So I know the $5 million, if it's unprogrammed, the state could take it away. If they feel there's a project that's superior to it, they can just grab it. I didn't realize that, even if it is programmed, they can still possibly take it away. Is that correct? They feel they have a project that's superior?
Right. Well, well, those, those recommendations in the STIP will go to the C T C, and they, they will approve, they, they, they are the approving body for those recommendations. You know, history for at least our, our, our project, the Los Banos bypass, has shown that they don't necessarily have to approve those recommendations, or they don't necessarily approve those recommendations. So I guess history speaks for itself that they don't always take the STIP recommendations.
But that money's been unprogrammed for a long time.
Yeah, I just don't see our downside of what we have to lose by not, by asking it. So I think we need to go for it.
The, the one thing I just want to be real clear is, is that there's no guarantee if the council adopts this resolution, that, that M C A G board will go along with unprogramming the funds. So just want to set a very realistic expectation that there's no guarantee. I think we have an uphill battle, but certainly would continue to recommend that the council adopt the resolution.
But you saw a need to bring this to us.
Yes, absolutely. Again, an uphill battle, but would, would continue to, to recommend the, the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Can, we can carry this on to the 20th, too, if we don't get any, but, I mean, tonight, I mean, let's, Mrs. Santos?
Yeah, I think I'm just going to echo Councilmember Jones's sentiments that I don't see the harm in doing that, so I think we should definitely try and, and go for that money as well. But I did have a question, and Mr. Faison, if you don't mind, the A M E, do you know how much that costs in total? I'm sorry to ask this offhand, but I don't know.
58.
58? Okay, thank you.
With design and engineering, it's like 48, construction, then another 10. I'm saying 58. I feel like Rain Man with all these numbers. Okay, any other discussion? We good? All right, so is it okay if I state the, the, the motion, since we added some things? Okay? Consideration approval of City Council Resolution Number 6157, requesting that $5 million of State Transportation Improvement Program carryover, regional improvement funds, and $5 million of county Measure V funds remain as unprogrammed and available for the Pioneer Road Widening Project, and including a component about referring to the safety of travel on 152. Is that clear enough, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
Second.
Motion by the mayor, as stated, second by Jones. Roll call, vote?
Korea? Johnson-Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes. Thank you, council. Advisory to public notices, no report. City managers' report. There you go.
Talked plenty tonight, but Mr. De La Cruz, always a pleasure to see you and your class and your students. I was going to acknowledge Ms. Morales, she did a great job. It's, it's not easy to stand at the podium and talk, talk to us, but you did, make sure you tell her tomorrow that she did a great job. So thank you, and, and thanks for the students coming.
That's it. Okay, report update on M C, on Merced County Association of Governments and Measure V Committee. Well, I think we, we've exhausted that tonight, I think, haven't we? Okay, thank you. I like that comment, I hope so. All right, so I don't have anything to report. Item 17, City Council Member Reports. Tonight, we'll start with Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to start off by indicating on November the 9th at 6:00 PM, there will be a fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club of Merced, and that fundraiser will be specifically for Los Banos to start the process of bringing the boys and girls clubs to Los Banos on a permanent basis. The tickets are $75 apiece. It's going to be held at the Hotel Mission d'Or over in San Anella, and a contact for tickets will be our chief, Chief Breezy of the Police Department. His phone number is 827-2501, or you can go to the Los Banos Police Department Facebook page, and there's all the information you need there about the fundraiser. October 23rd, we had our annual Peace for Family March in Los Banos, and thanks to our police chief again for supporting that effort and his staff. This march annually is consistently about domestic violence in our county and in Los Banos. And the, the message is, what can you do about it? We have the, an organization in the county that supports men and women who are involved in, in domestic violence, and also help them with legal aspects to work through the court systems for their restraining orders and such, and also helps them to understand that this is not a lifestyle that they have to accept, that there's another way out. And they've been very successful at helping, mostly women have come forward to speak at this annual meeting, and it's quite touching to hear what they go through and what it takes for them to get the strength to get out of the situation they're in. So I'm, I'm very proud of that organization, I'm very proud that the City of Los Banos supports that, and our police department, and our council members, and mayor who walk to support this organization. October 31st, we had another successful annual fun fest over on West Eye and L Street, and this year Chief Breezy came and participated, and I think he had a good time. Our fire department is always there supporting this effort, and I just want to thank our city staff who come out. We had over 2,000 children and their families come, and every year it grows. I, I had one lady that came up to me and said, you know, I saw the search light in the air, and I just followed it, and it led me here, and she was so happy to be able to bring her children to a safe place where they can have fun and get candy and win prizes and, you know, have fun in the bounce houses. I think, you know, I, I heard on the radio on that particular evening that more and more people are looking for a safe environment to bring their children to on Halloween night so that they can have a place where their families are there with them and not have to go to the door-to-door. I think that's all that I'm, I'm going to state this evening, Mr. Mayor. I'll leave the rest for other council members to make comment on. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you very much. Brief comment on October 19th, and we had our Party in the Park series in Ranchwood. It went very well, and I want to thank Joe Heim and all of the Parks and Rec Department for putting that together. We had, I want to say probably 200, 300 people there, I believe, and it was, it was really good, so I wanted to thank them once again for all their efforts in that. And I think that's all I'm going to mention as of today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to Mr. Jones.
No report.
Thank you. Everything that Mrs. Lewis said, spot on, so I won't repeat everything. The parties were great. Attending the, the different functions with the council members is always a pleasure, and presenting proclamations and providing a safe place for kids to be on, on Halloween night is absolutely spectacular, so thankful for the invitation. Just to the council, if you, if you're available tomorrow, there's going to be a, a vets luncheon at the Elks Lodge starting at 11:30, if you're, if you're able to, to attend. And then the vault of flag raising will take place at 8:00 AM on November 8th, I think. That's what I have on my calendar. So, so with that, council, thank you for the, for the unity. You don't know how much I appreciate this and, and the support, but it's, we all know it's the right thing to do, and, and let's continue to stay as a cohesive group, because it just, I just can't thank you enough, all of you. So with that, do we have any closed session or anything? Are we done? Oh, God, Bill goes on vacation, we have a shorter agenda. Fantastic. All right. So with that, I am going to adjourn this meeting at 9:36.